I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Teresa.
Nelson.
Here.
Orison.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Wunschel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Reed.
Bulk.
Here.
Item three tonight, we have a report from Joanne Fallon from the Iowa Lakes Corridor on the Best of Iowa 2021 results.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Joanne Fallon, as is said, with the Iowa Lakes Corridor. I am the Business Retention and Workforce Partnership Coordinator. Tonight, I want to report on our findings from our Best of Iowa visits. Best of Iowa is a program we have been doing for probably 15 years throughout the corridor region for Emmett County, Dickinson, Clay, and Buena Vista. We had a target list this year of 55 businesses, and we were able to complete 29 of those visits throughout the four county region. It is a national program, and it is managed by a team with Alliant Energy, Black Hills Energy, Mid-American Energy, IEDA, and IADG. So, we utilize the synchronous business system. We have an eight-page, we sit down with the employers, we have an eight-page survey that we complete with them, and that information is then entered into the synchronous database. All the information is confidential. We only report it in aggregated form, and that is what you have here this evening. Some of the things I'm going to run through here, I think 63% of the businesses were working regular hours of production. 24 of the businesses were working additional hours of production. And one that really stood out to me was 38% of the businesses had management changes. That is quite a bit higher than normal. I do not know the specifics of that, but that is what we're reporting from last year. And then also, almost 60% of the businesses had succession plans in place. One of the categories that we discuss with them is expansion plans. So, out of those 29 businesses, there's 14 businesses that were moving forward with their expansion plans. Expansion can mean many things. It can mean a facility expansion, it can mean equipment, it can mean workforce. So, those are not separated out, of course, but in all 14 businesses are moving forward. One other note that was kind of interesting was 15 businesses would consider a merger or an acquisition, probably due to workforce issues and possibly due to the cost of expansion. 76% of the businesses, when we looked at workforce, are struggling to hire qualified workers. There were some positives, though, that came out of it. Last year, many businesses had increased sales, which was a good thing. Also, money was spent on recreation, whether it be camping, or biking, or boating, or those types of things, and this is a recreational area for us, so that was beneficial for us. Opportunities with market demand, and increased efficiency with technology usage. Many people worked remote, and even some of their workforce were forced to use technology, and that was beneficial, they said. Some of the negative impacts, these were local and also at the state level, were the supply chain shortages, damaged materials once they did finally get them, and the increased prices of supplies, lack of workforce, of course, and then just the overall uncertainty of the economy. When we kind of dug a little deeper into the supplier chain disruptions, some of the things unable to receive the supplies in a timely manner, supplies not at full capacity drove the prices up, excuse me, suppliers not at full capacity drove the prices up. The trucking industry just overwhelmed in lack of truck drivers. And then the damage, and things not working properly once they received them. And then the construction industry, they really struggled as far as trying to bid jobs. Those raw materials continued to go up on a weekly basis, and so it was very, very difficult for them to bid jobs. So, one of the things that was really, really a necessity was better communication. And communication with employees, communication with vendors, communication with their customers. Communication just entered into this whole picture. So, that was something that was front and center. When you talk about the next category, product lifecycle, there were some positives in that as well. The market share of their key products was increasing, that was 12 businesses. 10 businesses have a growing primary market. 21 businesses introduced new products over the last three years, and they also anticipate over the next two years introducing new products. And then, technology changes are expected in their industries. They really feel that in the product production and operations. Over 66% of the businesses stated their primary markers, markets were national and international. This year, we included a utility service rating section. Normally, our utilities get a very good rating, so as you can see, we've listed those out in your report, and again, they did get good ratings. Technology infrastructure, almost 80% of the businesses said it was adequate and critical during the pandemic. We also included the community service ratings this year. That's something we haven't included in the actual report before. Child care services, that's an issue, and I believe Governor Reynolds is addressing that to some degree. Public transportation was one that came up in conversation. That got somewhat of a low rating. Airline passenger service, air cargo, and housing was extremely low as well. So, those are things that I wanted to share. So, when we do the report, we have the opportunity to really discuss things. Some of the things we really touch on with the workforce is the opportunities with our school systems. There's great programs out there. Career Days, workplace visits, J-Term Robotics, the ACE Mentor Program is a great program, work-based learning, that's really, really important. And then apprenticeship programs. Other recruiting programs we discuss with them are Future Ready Iowa, that Iowa Works has, Homebase Iowa, hiring your veterans. There's also the Iowa Prison Enhancement Program. We've had Dan Clark here in the past to talk about that particular program. Dan has a manufacturing background, and he has gone into the prison systems. The one I went to was in Rockwell City, and they are teaching the inmates to have a skill or a trade, so that when they are released, they do have something to fall back on. Approximately every year, 6,000 inmates are released. We also had a program in December with CIRIS through Iowa State. It was called the I-Win is the short abbreviation, but it's called Iowa Workforce Innovation Network, where it takes a look at all the different types of individuals, and they do an assessment, a free assessment, and then if you, as a company, want to pursue that further, then they will get the resources necessary to help you pursue those different individual groups. We also talk about marketing the underemployed. There are individuals out there that are underemployed, short hours, low wages. Those are individuals that could be possibly a niche for that company. Or even hiring retirees. We've had several companies that have began, that have begun to look at the retirees and working on a part-time basis as well. So, supply chain issues, I think you were all invited to our event that we had a week ago. That was a great event. We had 65 to 70 individuals, 65 to 70, 75 people that attended. It was a really good event. Again, communication, that was just over and over again, but we have some that are reaching out and going to work with CIRIS through that program. Also, expansion plans. We want to be one of the first calls that a company reaches out to for assistance for expansion plans. We are able to provide to them the Iowa Project Questionnaire, which we then send off to the state and to see whether or not that they are eligible for benefits at the state level. Then what we do is we start looking at the gap funding, and we pull the partners together to see if we can develop a plan for that business. Also, we also work with Iowa Lakes Community College on the 260E, 260F program, and any succession plans. If there's businesses that are looking to sell or looking for individuals, we do have Tom Nelson on our staff now, and we would be able to assist them in that as well. Also, any utility issues they may have. In the past, we've had some broadband issues, and we were able to assist a company and community in that as well. So, that's what I have for the Best of Iowa report. Now, you have another report in front of you. And I apologize, that was not in your packet, but we got these results late last week. And this is the Labor Shed Report. You should have two reports there. You should have the regional report, and then you should also have the Spencer Report, too. And this is a partnership with Iowa Works and IEDA. And it was a Labor Shed study that was done for Esterville, Spirit Lake, Spencer, and Storm Lake. And what it does, it defines the communities that contribute to each one of the city's workforce. It shows the commuting patterns of individuals, and then it also, so what the Iowa Lakes Corridor does, we send out letters to the businesses, and we ask them to compile ZIP codes for residents of their employees, and then they are able to map out a geographical map of the distance that people are commuting to work. So, if you look at the report, I'm going to give you regional, look at it as a regional. So, if you look at the report, you will be able to see that 83.7 people are employed. The last Labor Shed that was done was in 2019, and that is up probably 3.7 points, and that's a good thing. The unemployed individuals are 7.5. And the thing to note on those two groups, too, is when you look at the employed individuals, little over 27% of those would be willing to change employment for the right opportunity. And then, 18% of those are actually seeking other employment. Of the unemployed, 65% are willing to re-enter the workforce. They take a look at the homemakers, that segment of individuals that are at home. 56% were willing to re-enter the workforce. And then even the retirees, there's almost 28% willing to re-enter the workforce. So, 75% of the residents interviewed have some education and training behind, beyond high school, and I believe, and let me check here, I believe it was 65% have an education beyond high school for the unemployed individual. So, it looks at their education, it breaks that down in percentages, and like I said, it talks about those that are seeking employment, and what their source is to look for employment, and most of it is internet. So, this information comes out of specific surveys that they do. They call individuals. There were over 1,100 people surveyed for this report. And they look at wages, they look at the industry and the education, and then they also break it down and look at the underemployment, inadequate hours, low income, misfit of skills, those types of things. So, I, this is great information, it's useful information. The purpose of the Labor Sheds Study is to really understand what our workforce characteristics are in our region. So, we use it in economic development, our businesses use it if they're marketing employees, and then also, new businesses, looking at our area, they want to know what type of workforce, what's the education of the workforce, you know, what's the availability of the workforce? So, these are all things that are very important to people who are looking to relocate. But I want to invite you to take a look at the lakescorridor.com website. There is an analysis tool on there that will break down every segment and explain it in depth. You can do it by region, you can do it by Spencer, for example, and it'll really give you a great understanding of the workforce. And then if you have any additional questions, please reach out. We'd be glad to answer any of them. Okay?
Thank you, Joanne. Any questions? Either of you?
Thank you.
Anybody have anything?
A lot of good information.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you very much. I, you know, having just seen this, you know, it's hard to digest it.
Oh, no, no, no. I understand completely.
At this point. But I do have a question with regard to unemployment, and, you know, I know that we have a lot of business owners on this council who deal with this on a regular basis. And the 7.5% figure, and as opposed to, I think, the most recent figure I saw on the state level was 3.6?
Five.
3.5?
3.5 was February, yes.
Okay, well, you know, we're in the ballpark.
We are, we are.
Yeah. What would you say the discrepancy is there?
I can't answer that.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Those were the individuals that they surveyed.
Okay.
So, it could be skewed, you know. I guess I don't have a good answer for that. I apologize.
Yeah.
But I can reach out to workforce and ask them.
Yeah.
Would you like me to do that, Steve?
Sure.
Okay.
And the other thing with regard to workforce, and I know this is on everybody's mind, from the local level to the state level to the federal level, and, and that is, a couple weeks ago, at Eggs and Issues, I don't know whether it was Representative Wills or Jones who was talking about labor force, and they were talking about unemployment benefits versus labor force. And they were saying, well, we've got 60,000 people throughout the state who are on unemployment, but we've got 120,000 jobs.
Right.
So, you know, it's, it's tough to square those numbers.
It's very tough.
Even if we could get everybody, and a lot of those people probably are not employable.
And I think that's why our businesses are probably looking more to automation, robotics. Not that that's going to eliminate people's jobs, because it's not, but it's just going to make their efficiencies run that much better. So, they're exploring, I, our employers are very creative, they're exploring every option they can.
Yeah. It's a tough situation for everybody involved, without question.
And Beth Townsend with IWD just stated in a, in a report I saw today that unemployment for all states had declined, and so, the changes that they've made with unemployment, they think are helping to some point, so.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah.
Joanne, when you talked to IWD about that unemployment level, can they give you an idea of how many, of what percentage of those people are unemployable, do you think?
I can ask them. I certainly will ask them.
It'd be interesting to know, in our area, what that number is.
Yeah, we'll see if we can get a specific report for you on that.
Thanks.
Yeah, we'll give them some specifics.
Joanne and Mr. Ware, I think maybe, possibly, one of the discrepancies we're talking about, people that answered this, they asked, were they unemployed?
Yes.
They answered, yes.
Yes.
Do they want to work, or are they in the workforce? And if they're not in the workforce, that's where they get, it drops down to 3.5. If they're unemployed and not in the workforce, they're not counted.
Sure.
And that's why they get the 3.5 versus, I think, the 9.4.
I'll get that confirmed for you guys.
Okay, yeah. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
It's excellent information, and that we can take a little time and look at.
Yes, please do.
Yeah.
Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, moving along, item four is the consent agenda. Item A is a motion to approve city council minutes of March 21, 2022. Item B, licenses approved renewal of Class C liquor license with Sunday sales for prime rib and Class C liquor license with Sunday sales for Wheezy's Lounge and Grill, subject to final approval by the Iowa ABD. Item C is resolution acknowledging receipt of fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget of Spencer Municipal Hospital of the City of Spencer, Iowa. Item D, a resolution authorizing permanent transfer of funds of budgeted transfers for the month ending March 31, 2022. Item E is a motion for acceptance of Windcrest 1 and Windcrest 2 sanitary sewer from developers and make them part of the public sanitary sewer system. Item F is a motion to approve temporary construction easements for the 2022 sidewalk ramp ADA upgrades project with Mary Fairchild Irrevocable Trust, 1017 West 11th Street, Karen Hoag, 18 West 11th Street, and Marvin and Hope Erickson, 916 11th Avenue West. Item G is a resolution to provide for a notice of hearing on proposed plans and specifications, form of contract, and estimate of costs for 2022 NPRL intermediate cover project, letting date April 28, 2022, at 3:00 p.m. Hearing date May 2, 2022, 6:30 p.m. And entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll introduce it.
Second. Motion made by Bill, seconded by Donovan. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Bulk, aye.
Item five, we have some public hearings on the agenda. 5A is a public hearing on the establishment of the City of Spencer, 25th Street Southwest Sanitary Sewer District, and the adopting of connection fees. This is the Eckhart Edition. I declare the public hearing now open. Do we have any written comments against?
We have none.
Any oral comments against? Any written comments in favor of?
We have none.
Any oral comments in favor of? I declare the public hearing now closed. Item 5A1 is an ordinance establishing the City of Spencer, 2022, 25th Street Southwest Sanitary Sewer District, and establishing sanitary sewer connection fees. This is the first filing.
I'll make, second.
Moved by Tom.
Ron.
Ron has the second. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Bulk, aye.
Item 5B, public hearing on proposed text amendments to Title IX, Chapter 5 of the Spencer Zoning Code concerning permitted residential uses above for second floor and above in CBD zoning district. I now declare the public hearing open. Any written comments against?
We have none.
Any oral comments against? Any written comments in favor of?
We have none.
Any oral comments in favor of? Item 5B1 is an ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter 5, Section 1 of the Spencer City Code to allow as permitted uses, single-family residential, duplex residential, and multifamily residential uses in the CBD zoning district. This is the first filing.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Brian.
Second.
Seconded by Donovan. Any discussion?
I'm just kind of happy to see this. We've had a problem with the CD, our CBD district with, with if there happened to be a fire or something about moving them as non-conforming residential, so I'm happy this is clarifying some of that and allowing those in that district now, so.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, please vote by machine.
Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Bulk, aye.
Okay, motion carries. Item 5C, public hearing on proposed text amendments to Title IX, Chapter 5 of the Spencer Zoning Code, clarifying Section 4 exterior wall requirements in the CBD zoning district. I now declare the public hearing open. Any written comments against?
We have none.
Any oral comments against? Any written comments in favor of?
We have none.
Any oral comments in favor of? I now declare the public hearing now closed. Item 5C1 is an ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter 5, Section 4, subsection B of the Spencer City Code to clarify requirements for exterior wall coverings in the CBD zoning district. First filing.
I'll introduce it.
Motion made by Bill.
Second.
Seconded by Tom.
Tracy.
Tracy?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Any discussion?
Question, Alec, could you come forward and, and explain what, what the changes on, on the downtown buildings and what this, what this clarifies for the public?
Yes, good evening. So, this text amendment clarifies the exterior wall requirements. Right now, it reads 75% of all walls must be under the classification. Staff has always interpreted it as a 75% of each wall must be conforming materials. It was brought up that this might be viewed differently, so we wanted to get the planning and zoning's approval on it and to review it. They agreed that that's, that's what it was meant to be, was 75% of each wall, so we wanted to get that clarified.
Okay. So, basically, it was just to clarify?
Yes.
It's going to stay the same?
Yes.
Just interpretation.
It's the same interpretation we've always been using?
Right.
It was just, it was questioned so really well, let's have the conversation to make sure staff is doing this correctly.
Right. So. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, before Alec goes, any other questions for Alec? Nice pirouette, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
That was good.
Anything else? Okay, no, thank you. Thank you.
Don't do that to Jared.
I don't think he'll try. I'm pretty sure he won't try. Okay. Any other discussion? Please vote by machine.
Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Bulk, aye.
Okay. Item six, new business. Item A is a motion to approve quote from Balance Professionals, Inc., BPI, for $4,950 for air systems testing and balancing for Library HVAC Project Phase 2.
So moved.
Motion made by Tom.
Second.
Seconded by Bill. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item B is a motion to approve quote from Woodman Controls Company for not to exceed $2,000 to assist with functional performance testing as part of the retrocommissioning process for Library HVAC Project Phase 2.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Brian.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ron. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Does this get us to completion? Project or?
Sarah Beth, what do you think on this?
That's a trick question, maybe.
I know you've used Mark White as a consultant on this a little bit.
So this will get us.
Oh, Brian, okay.
So when we did the HVAC study about three years ago, phase one and phase two gets us three-fourths of the way of their recommendations. The rest of their recommendations all have to do with equipment replacement, such as the boilers and the condensing units, and those were identified for upcoming CIPs. But this was, items in the current one and this one were what they kind of recommended checking off the list first as we go through that, and then the rest of it wasn't viewed as critical. So this gets us through the majority of their recommendations out of that study. And then they're, like I said, the rest of it's all equipment replacement.
Okay, all right. Okay, anything else? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item C is a motion to approve professional service contract with Cruz, Kate, and Nelson P. C. for two thousand twenty two Spencer Seal Co. project.
So moved.
Moved by Donovan. Second by Bill. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item D is a motion to approve professional services contract with Cruz, Kate, and Nelson P. C. for two thousand twenty two crack and joint sealing project.
So moved.
Motion made by Tom. Second. Who got that second?
Donovan.
Any discussion?
I have to book my air.
These guys are quick. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item E is a motion to approve professional services contract with Cruz, Kate, and Nelson P. C. for two thousand twenty two intake replacement project.
So moved.
Tracy, second.
Second.
By Bill. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item F is a motion to approve the agreement with the YMCA for the City of Spencer Aquatic Center operation for two thousand twenty two season.
So moved.
Motion made by Donovan. Second by Ron. Any discussion?
Timeframe, I know I saw the contract and.
So we're going to get Jared up here, and the second one might deal with Jared as well, so just hang in there.
Yep.
Timeframe, so you're looking like when they start and when they close.
Yeah, when they're starting and closing.
So I think we'll probably open June first, just because I think there's a couple of snow days and schools kind of getting backed up a little bit. So we'll start June first and close August fourteenth, so, well, about seventy-nine some odd days in there.
Okay.
You got a date when you're filling the pool?
Probably.
That's when the snow stops, right?
Yep. Probably in about two, two and a half weeks.
Okay, wow, okay.
Is he ready to go swimming?
He's ready to test that pool heater.
As long as the heater's working, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That's why I need a fill.
Anything else for Jared while he's up here? And he may be up here probably for the next one.
Yeah, I'll stay for him next.
Anything else? If not, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item G is a motion to approve the agreement with the YMCA for the City of Spencer Playground for two thousand twenty two season. Motion made by Tom.
Second.
Second by Donovan. Any discussion or questions for Jared?
Which three parks are they doing this?
They'll do Sunset Deerfield and East Leach, like they did last year. Yep.
All righty. And I seen that ran from like the first of June to July twenty ninth or something.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. And Jared, is this is similar to what we did last year?
Correct.
Correct?
Yep.
Right. And I see rain dates, if it rains, they may, will not have.
Correct.
In the park, and it's what, seven thirty to eleven thirty, or eight thirty to eleven thirty it was?
Eight thirty to eleven thirty, I believe is what it says.
Okay.
Okay, okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item H, we're pulling per Chief Conyons recommendation. Item I is a motion to approve industrial pretreatment program on call engineering services agreement renewal with McClure Engineering Services. Motion made by Tom.
Second.
Second by Bill. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, what did you say about the change order number three?
On H, H, yeah, that was pulled per Chief Cony.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, item seven, department head reports. Planning Department, Alec.
Good evening again, everyone. So planning, weather's starting to get nice, so building permits are picking up, inspections are picking up. So we're looking at a lot of that stuff right now. We're trying to monitor some of the stuff in legislation right now that has to do with inspection, zoning, building permits, those types of things. So we'll keep you updated on those as that goes forward. With the nice weather, grass is hopefully going to start growing again soon. So we're looking at trying to get contractors to do the city nuisance mowing. So if you hear of anyone, send them our way if they want to have a conversation. That'd be great. And departments, we're having conversations with, that have to do with floodplains in our industrial area, what we can do and what we would like to proceed. We're still working on some of those things, so look forward to those types of conversations in the future here. On that note, we're looking at potential conversations with rental residential housing coming forward in the next month or so. We'll be meeting with a few folks and just kind of going throughout the city and looking at potential areas. With other types of stuff with the planning and zoning meetings, you saw some of those types of text amendments today. We're looking at other ones as well, one of those being the zone A, what's allowed for types of homes in those, in that single-family zone. So planning and zoning will meet next week to discuss some of those things, as well as take up a conversation on urban chickens. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Alec? Yeah, Alec, I do have a question. You mentioned that you're monitoring some of the legislation that the legislature is in the process of working on that will affect or could affect cities.
Yes.
Could you just expand on that just a little bit?
Yeah.
Don't have to go into detail, but just what are some of the issues that they're looking at?
So at this point, again, they're having conversation with them, but they've made it through a lot of the funnel preliminary conversations, things that have to do with plumbing code, electrical code, building code, which kind of encompasses a lot of it, and limiting local jurisdictions' ability to make amendments to those. So that's kind of the conversation that's being held that has to do with those types of inspection processes on our end.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions for Alec? Okay.
Can we go back to the urban chickens? What are they doing with that?
So a request has come to the planning and zoning to discuss allowing chickens in residential districts. So that's a discussion at this point for the next planning and zoning meeting.
Thanks for the heads up.
Yes.
Ron and I were both on the council the last time that came up, yeah. So it, yes. Were you on as well? Okay, yeah, okay, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, library, Sarah Beth.
Good evening and happy National Library Week, if you didn't know that. The first full week in April every year is the time to celebrate our nation's libraries, public libraries, academic and school libraries, library workers, and just promote library use and support. There's a popular meme that has been shared on library and book-related social media that describes public libraries as one of the few public spaces left in our society where you're allowed to exist without the expectation of spending money. And public libraries can connect you at no charge to the resources to fulfill your lifelong learning and entertainment needs. In the last twelve months, Spencer Public Library has saved community members over eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, and that is just checking out the materials we keep in-house. It's not counting any of our online databases or the downloadable audiobooks, ebooks, magazines, videos, all of that that is available through our Bridges subscription. Or, and it also doesn't count the activity, activities like movie days and craft kits and our in-person tech help that we provide. So we are celebrating National Library Week by giving away popcorn every afternoon this week, and there's a guess how many bookworms in the jar, gummy worms contest at the front desk, and we are also going to put on a Night at the Library themed escape room. So that starts Thursday afternoon and goes through Saturday as well. So you can sign up a team of up to ten members, and there'll be three different scenes set up in the round room that you have to find the clues and solve the puzzles to kind of progress through each scene. And the premise is that the book characters have come alive at the, at closing at night, kind of like the movie Night at the Museum, but they have been little rascals and moved things around. So we're trying to put everything back in order before the library opens again. So you can just give us a call and get signed up for that if you want. Then, so I've been busy promoting National Library Week as well. I spoke to the High Noon Kwanis today, and we'll be talking to Ryan at KICD tomorrow morning. And Kevin and Ria have also recorded librarians reading book questions for their pop quiz in the morning, so I was really excited that they included us in that to help promote us. As the weather gets nicer, we're seeing more and more patrons visiting the library again, and we're closer than ever to our pre-pandemic normal with offering more in-house programs again. The latest service we, service that we rolled out this month is our audio lab, and that is where you can bring in your vinyl records and cassette tapes, and Amy, our IT librarian, will help you learn the equipment so you can digitize those items onto a digital format. So that's pretty handy. The library building, on the other hand, continues to show its age, so we did have a couple of leaks in the roof that we got patched up, and the roof drain, that's what I did consult with Mark White on, the roof drain was leaking, and so we got the leak fixed. We're going to probably wait until July to have that replaced, which is what they've suggested we do, so. And then there's a heater, not related to the HVAC system, that isn't working, and we're waiting for a part on that. But hopefully, the roof replacement is up next in our CIP project, so hopefully that will help us save some money on building maintenance, so.
Any questions?
Probably a group of citizens who would like to put the city council in the escape room.
Yeah, that would be fun, actually.
Without a key, maybe? Yeah, yeah.
Dan, can you confirm, is the library included in the facilities plan that we're working on?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
And, okay, well, we can get to that later, but that is a good question. And congratulations on the National Library Week.
Thanks.
And good planning that Spencer Schools has spring break, right?
Yeah, that was a happy circum, you know, coincidence right there.
Yeah, and you did mention that the library is one place that you can still go and not spend dollars, but I do know that when, my wife and I usually go to the library on Thursday nights, and it seems like the first attraction, though, is all the books you're selling, rather than.
Is that, yeah?
Yeah, it is. So we do spend a little money at the library as well.
Okay, well, I apologize for that.
Not much.
But they are, you know, fifty cents for a hardcover.
Oh, it's a great deal.
Twenty-five cents.
It's a great deal. It's a great deal.
And we've got twenty-plus boxes in the back to get rid of if you want to look through more, but.
Okay.
We're in the middle of weeding, so.
All right. So anyway, thank you very much, Sarah Beth. Okay. Fire chief John is not here. He does have a written report in front of the council. Police chief Warburton.
Good evening. Month of March, had the police department responding to seven hundred and fifty-nine calls for service, and we performed thirty arrests. This month was a busy one for the police department. March fifth had the police department and the Clay County dispatchers participating in Family Fest, Safety City, which was a well-attended event. March fifteenth and seventeenth were department-wide training days. Officers were trained in the new AEDs, which was provided by a grant from the Helmsley Foundation AED project. The older AEDs that the police department had were recycled to the rest of the city. Officers were certified with the new pepperball launchers and defensive tactics, working on team takedowns and handcuffing. March twenty-second, twenty-third, Lieutenant Bernard Lou and I attended an evidence room management class in Sioux City, which was quite beneficial. March twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, the co-op, the Iowa Great Lakes co-op tested, which resulted in several, seven people making the certified list. Happy to announce that Thomas Baller has been hired and will start shortly. He's a certified deputy from Emmett County, so please help welcome him to the department here later this month. March thirty-first, their graduation was held. We had approximately two hundred and fifth graders graduate the program. Officer Hanson and Kearney run that program and do an amazing job connecting with the kids, which is often nice to see at the graduation. Lastly, March twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, Region Twenty-One U.S. Police K-9 Association dog trials were held here in Spencer. You might have noticed all the patrol cars or additional activity here in Spencer. Approximately sixty dog teams participated in the certification event. Proud to announce that Lieutenant Westfall and our dog Menix repeated as the top dog, finishing in first place. Should be noted that Deputy Heck from Clay County with his dog Cash finished in third place. I know both handlers spend a lot of time with their dogs, and it definitely shows, so it does the citizens well. Also, finish up, the police department received their new updated body cameras that you may have seen on some of the officers, and we're still rolling out that program, so with a finish date here in the next week here, that all the officers will have those. Have any questions for them?
Any questions for chief?
Mark, does that hire fill you up?
Yes, yep. This was an opening that Officer Prescott, when he left and went to Sack County, and so he is a certified officer, which saves the city quite a bit of money. Comes to us with approximately twenty years of experience, so we're glad to have him.
How about the dispatch job?
We're still one down, so hopefully, we got a couple of interviews this week, so we're hoping. Keep your fingers crossed.
Yep.
Chief, one thing, I was going to bring this up in the mayor's report, but since you're here, I think you could reemphasize or emphasize this as well, and that is with spring coming and with spring break for kids at school. I noticed today lots and lots of kids on bikes out with this kind of weather, and I think as a community, we need to be cognizant of the fact that there's a lot of bike traffic in the community, and also that, that we have some bike traffic on Grand in the central business district on the sidewalks, and we should stay off of that particular area.
Right, right. You're supposed to walk the bicycles up on Grand, and that's just, you know, a pretty common thing here, business owners. you know, a pretty common thing here, business owners, customers are coming out of their businesses, and they're not, and they're startled by somebody coming by on a bicycle, and sometimes they're going faster than really, than the average, and so it can cause for some dangerous situations. So, yeah, we'd appreciate it if you definitely walked your bicycle up there on Grand Avenue, on the sidewalks up there.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Yep, any other questions?
Thank you. Public Works, Mark?
Good evening. We completed all the job evaluations for the divisions this month. Also, Street Division worked at the airport with quarterly inspections and repairs. We're working through a couple components that were no longer supported and had to come up with some creative ways to repair that. As weather allows, we started with the 2022 sewer cleaning project, which we section a, a portion of the city off every year and then try to clean every line in that area, and that's in the northwest corner, kind of over by the fairgrounds, so if you see the trucks out running, that's what's going on. Had to do a temporary intake repair that had crashed down worse than we would have wanted, and we didn't think it was gonna make it very long, so had to do a temp repair on that. Several safety trainings throughout the month, confined space, respirator fitting, along with our monthly safety meeting. I'm also the chairman of the Shield Board, so we had a quarterly Shield Board meeting that was last week. Also, I'd like to remind citizens, as we move into the warmer weather, and Alec mentioned with the construction permits, call 1-800, or the 811, Iowa One Call for digging, for locates. Our locates have been picking up already in the office, so we do them with Public Works staff, and then when our seasonal worker comes in at the end of this month, then he picks up and takes over. Also, we were out reviewing the Seal Coat Program, just starting the construction season, getting ready and marking out patches and ready to go. Visited the landfill last Friday, and things are going well there. We're also at the, on the job site at the wastewater treatment plant, working through some of those issues, so, I don't want to say issues, but normal construction things that you work through, so. Any questions?
Questions for Mark?
Mark, just an observation, minor, but in my opinion, it makes a, a big difference, and that is that the, just to thank you for getting the street sweeper out there, and of all things, mainly in the alleys, because the sand and it just gets, the gravel gets so bad, but I think it makes a big difference when you hit the streets and the, the curbs and along there too, so.
Thank you, Tom, freshens things up, keeps it out of the sewer. All of the Central Business District has been swept, including the, the alleys, as you mentioned, and it does get a lot of sand in those, and then also, then we're starting on our normal sweeping routes as well, so.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Park and Recreation, Jared?
Good evening. It's on the Parks Department, we're kind of gearing up for some of our projects, Boat Ramp Project, Ross had spoken with MLS, who's gonna do that project. I think they're anticipating to start the first or second week in May. So, we'll keep everyone posted when that gets closer, we'll probably have to close probably a section of trail down just while they're doing some of that work, and, and we'll try to keep that boat ramp on alternative options so people can get, get into the river and stuff as well, so we'll keep everybody posted on that. Fairview Tennis Courts, we're gonna receive bids here on Friday for that project, we'll know a little bit more about that Wellmark Grant. Anticipated April 29th is kind of the date that they gave us for awards on that, so we'll keep you updated on that as well. Working with Jim on the rocket slide, getting quotes over the next couple weeks for site work for that rocket slide, and then if you remember, we did approve the surfacing, that'll go in after all the site work and stuff is completed, so trying to get that project kind of going and wrapped up. As we talk about the Emerald Ash Bore a little bit, we're putting together some priority areas on, on some trees and a plan on, you know, how we're gonna treat some of those trees and deal with some of those trees, as well as hold up a public meeting with one of the entomologists from Iowa Department of Agriculture towards the end of April, so trying to schedule that out with him for, for the public, so they know how to handle private trees, what they do on their property and that sort of thing as well. We'll be able to answer questions on how we're gonna handle public trees and public trees in the right of way and that sort of thing as well, so be on the lookout for that stuff. The guys are continuing to work on the ball fields, we're waiting on one scoreboard for Field One that was donated by the Spencer Little League. We're doing park cleanups. I did provide a list to Mary Beth at City Hall, so if we have service clubs or volunteer groups or anything like that, we do have a list of our heavily-used parks that always could use help and volunteers on cleaning up litter and that sort of thing, so feel free to come into City Hall if you do have a service project. We will provide the, the garbage bags and that sort of stuff, and then if you just leave them there near some of our trashcans, we will, we'll have staff pick those up. Here in the next couple weeks, we'll be cleaning and filling the pool, getting that stuff ready, the campground, we'll start getting that ready as well, turning on the utilities and stuff. We already have had several campers use that just for electricity, staying for, so that, that is picking up. And we're also trying to work through some playground repairs. We've ordered parts here, you know, several months ago, and, and they're in the same boat as everybody else on logistics and equipment, getting that stuff. We have received some of that, so we're working through playground repairs at, at some of our various parks as well. And then, just as a reminder, the registration for some of our tennis, pickleball, and bags leagues that we're partnering with the Y, that registration begins on May 1st. Volleyball and basketball, that registration will begin May 30th. And then we finalized some dates for food truck events, and we'll be looking to advertise that here in the next week or two, so.
Jared?
Yeah.
Thanks to a local financial institution, there are many yards that have ash trees in the back. How, as citizens start watching trees starting to leaf out, are there any early signs that we should be looking for as a signs of the Emerald Ash Bore, or should we wait till the 29th for that presentation?
Yeah, so there'd be a little bit more information on the 29th, but early signs are it'll start losing leaves from the top of the tree, the top crown of the tree, and work its way down. So, if you start seeing leaves that are missing at the very top of the tree, that's kind of an early warning sign. If you see the top half of it missing, it's probably been infected for a year or two, and so just keep an eye on those as those start to leaf out, be a little bit more cognizant of that, and then, you know, we can, if you have some concerns, send us pictures or something, and we can definitely take a look and let you know, so.
Any, any other questions for Jared?
To go along with that bill, we're work, Jared and I are working together to get a dedicated, excuse me, information source on our website that has links to various information on, for Emerald Ash Bore, where he's given me some, and we're trying to build that page now, so as a resource going forward, we'll try to keep that updated and get more information out there, too.
Iowa State Extension has a lot of good frequently asked questions and stuff, and we're working through that and trying to get some of that information up on our website as soon as possible, so.
Well, Jared, I'd, I'd like to thank you for being proactive on the Emerald Ash Bore, and, and I'd like to thank Councilman Orison several years ago for having the foresight to push the council to put some money away. We, it was not a question of whether the Emerald Ash Bore was going to be in Clay County and in Spencer, but just a question of when it was going to be. It wasn't if, it was when it was going to be, and so we do have some resources to work with this, so.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you very much for, for your work on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, anything else? Thanks, Jared. Okay, golf course, Brian can't be with us tonight, but he did submit a written report Sunday morning, per usual. Yes. City Attorney, Don?
Thank you, Mayor. March was a generally business-as-usual sort of month, a lot of meetings, Airport Board, Board of Adjustment, Planning and Zoning, Civil Service, as the chief mentioned. One thing was unusual is following up on tobacco sales to minors. The police department does monitor that, does issue citations, and those can result in civil penalties. There were, I think, about five, so just a caution to avoid that sort of activity. Otherwise, any questions?
Thank you, Don. Engineers Report, Ross?
Good evening, everyone. We do have one contractor that's been working in Spencer this spring already, Corey Juergen's Construction has been working on the drainage cleaning project down by Bernard's. They've got most of that cleaning done, they've got a little wrap-up to do with some stump removal, and also gotta get rid of the excess dirt that they've excavated out of that ditch. His crew's also been working on sawing on the projects, a couple different projects, the 2021 intake repair project and the 2022 sidewalk ramp ADA upgrades. I believe if the, when the rain stops at the end of the week, he'll start removing intakes and replacing those in various locations throughout the community. We do plan to take competitive quotes on Thursday afternoon for the 2022 Seal Coat Project. As Jared mentioned, we're taking bids on Friday for the Fairview Tennis Courts, and then the city's also in a joint project with SMU, and where SMU is the contracting authority, and that work for the city is Storm Sewer Extension on 14th Avenue West and partial street replacement over there. That project also bids on Friday, so.
Okay.
That's what we have going right now. If there's any questions.
Any questions? Thanks, Ross.
Thank you.
City Managers Report, Dan?
Just a couple things, like I've been to the last few meetings, still missing some NIM stuff, so get that done when you can. Also, going back to the earlier meeting with the Planning Department, I, I got a, an email from a planner friend of mine down in southeast Iowa that had to point out that it was pretty ironic that the state legislature is gonna preempt our zoning of fireworks, and they, fortunately, we have a full downtown because we could not stop anybody from selling fireworks in a downtown store, which 90 years ago, we know what happened there, so it's sort of disappointing that the legislature doesn't pay any attention to history, but I guess that's what we're stuck with. I don't know if it's been signed yet, but it's, it's got a full head of steam and it's probably gonna be, and that's all I have.
Okay. Item 10, under the mayor's report, a few things. Item 1, George Moriarty was the, the city's representative to Northwest Iowa Planning and Development Commission Board, and I, I did volunteer to serve as his replacement, so it's, it's rather awkward, but I do need a motion to approve the appointment of myself as the City of Spencer representative to Northwest Iowa Planning and Development Commission Board. Well, I hope it doesn't die for lack of a second, though, so.
No, you are hoping it does. Oh, no, I'll second it.
Seconded by Ron. Any discussion? I can see, okay, well, okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries. Item 2 is a motion to reappoint Connie Larson to the Civil Service Commission. Her term would expire April 1, 2026. Motion made by Tom?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ron. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries. Okay, third on the mayor's report, Jared touched on this briefly, but last fall, in our neighborhood in South Spencer, we had a young elementary student and, and her family organize a cleanup of our neighborhood, and with some city participation with trash bags and so forth. And, earlier this spring, on one of the nice days, when I was out biking along the Oxbow, I noticed a lot of trash had accumulated along the trail and so forth. So, in talking to Jared and some of the other department heads, we, what we'd like to do in conjunction with Earth Day is have a city cleanup, and so there will be letters going out to service clubs and churches and schools and so forth, inviting them to participate in a city cleanup. And the city will have, as Jared pointed out, a list of public areas that could use cleaning up this spring, and, but it doesn't, you don't have to limit it to that. You, you can clean up your own neighborhood if you want to, organize some people to clean up your neighborhood, organize a class to clean up a school grounds or church area or whatever, but for the public areas, all you have to do is call City Hall, tell them what public area, we have a list of those, and we will tell you what's been taken or what's available, and you can come down to City Hall, pick up some garbage bags, orange garbage bags, and just, and then I think you can just put them by the trash receptacles and the city will pick them up. Now, if you want to clean up your neighborhood, we will provide the trash bags to do that as well, or any other area, so, and again, just stop down at City Hall or call City Hall, let us know what you're going to do, and we'd like it in conjunction, as I said, with Earth Day, which is April 22nd and that following week, so go from April 22nd to about May 1st, so that's, that's what we would like to do, and hopefully we can get some good participation and clean up the community, make it look good. The next item on the mayor's report, the Senior Center, still fielding some calls and emails with regard to the Senior Center, and that deadline that the Senior Center Board has set of April 15th is fast approaching, so if there are some groups that are interested, individuals who are interested in seeing the Senior Center remain open, we, we, you need to get together, you need to talk to Senior Center Board members. I will be happy to meet with any individual or groups who would like to see the Senior Center remain open. Hopefully, we can get that situation cleared up. Next, just like to mention Spencer youth baseball and softball. I know that Board extended the deadline for the signups, very appreciative of the Board for doing that, and I also know that this is, is providing some extra work for Board members that they did not anticipate, and I'd also like people to remember that the Board members are doing this on an all-volunteer basis, and they don't get paid a dime for this, they put in all kinds of hours, and in addition to that, many of them also coach. So, when you see them out at the Ball Diamonds, out at Pedersen Park, and there's nothing better than seeing kids out playing baseball and softball, please thank them for their efforts and thank them for extending that deadline. And then, lastly, you might have noticed, I'm sure many of you have, that the lights on the buildings on Grand Avenue are blue and yellow in support of Ukraine, and just remember, keep the Ukrainian people in our thoughts and prayers. So, that's all I've got on the mayor's report. Counseling Committee Reports, looks like we have quite a few.
Yeah, we do. Your Monday nights are gonna be pretty busy for a while. We have a committee of the whole on April 11th to talk about debt discussion that we brought up during goal-setting and a couple other things about the level of debt the council will be comfortable with, and that leads into different planning issues, especially in the parking rec plan and some other, some other issues where we might need to borrow some money, so we need to discuss that. We have a Personnel Committee meeting on April 14th, discussing some job descriptions and personnel manual and some other things with, with that. We got your next regular council meeting on the 18th, and Finance Committee meeting also on the 18th at 5:00 PM to... To talk about some of the rate studies for solid waste rates and sewer rates and that sort of thing. And then we have a committee of the whole about that same subject on the twenty-fifth at five-thirty.
Okay. Okay. Item twelve, need a motion to approve the bills and claims. Motion made by Bill.
I'll second.
Seconded by Brian. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item thirteen, other business and opportunity to address the council.
I would like to expand a little bit on the, on the Little League softball thing. I've had a number of phone calls from different board members and stuff. Aaron Teshin's in the crowd and Katie and their two sons. And did have a nice discussion with Aaron. And I just want to applaud them for opening that back up so that we can get as many kids as want to play ball, playing ball in Spencer, Iowa. And I think that's the main thing, is, is keeping the kids in mind for this. I know there was some back and forth about it being a little bit of a difficult situation. And I, I'm, I'm sure logistic-wise with those guys, it does create some things. But I, I just commend them on, on what I feel is the right thing in getting as many kids in Spencer that want to play ball the opportunity.
Thanks, Tom. Yeah, I, your comments are well-taken. I think everyone has the same goal, and that's the kids, without question. Okay. Anything else? Okay, item fourteen, before we, I entertain a motion on this to go into closed session, I'd like Don to simply review the purpose of going into closed session and what the procedures are.
Thank you, Mayor. As, as you all know, all, almost all meetings of the council and committees of the city are open public meetings where the public is, has the right to attend. There are a number of exceptions. One of them is on the agenda for this evening, and that is when there's a consideration of a possible acquisition of real estate and the disclosure of the city's interest or the amount that the city might consider paying could, could lead to increasing the cost, you can go into a closed session, and that's what's proposed, as I understand. You'll remember that there are some procedures required whenever you go into closed session. An audio recording of the closed session must be retained. Detailed minutes also must be retained, and those are sealed until in this case, the decision on the real estate is made one way or the other. Then that information, the minutes and the audio recording become public. And as, as traditionally, I remind the council that when you're in the closed session, the topic of discussion needs to be the topic that justifies the closed session. That is discussing the purchase of real estate and not wandering into other subjects. And finally, you'll take action, if any, in open session, although I'm not, I'm not sure that there'll be any action this evening. But whenever a decision is to be made, it'll be in open session. Any questions?
Thank you, Don. With that, I would entertain a motion for a closed session pursuant to Section twenty-one point five J of the Iowa Code regarding purchase or sale of particular real estate. Motion made by Bill. Seconded by Tom. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Yes.
And, and Don, just to clarify, from what you've been able to review, you're comfortable with us going into closed session tonight based on what you've been told and what you've had a chance to review? You believe it meets the definition?
Yes, that's true.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, so we will be in closed session in a few minutes.